Pledge of allegiance. Oh, I'm sorry, Bobby Allseth? Okay. Pledge of allegiance?
To the flag, to the states of America, to the public, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Ah, Mr. Catino.
Yes.
How are you? Welcome. We already started.
Yes.
All right, public forum. Residents are invited to share ideas, opinions, or ask questions regarding town government. With the exception of Mr. Harrow, is there anyone out there that would like to say something?
I don't even need to sit down. I come to sing the praises of a town employee, Mr. Ben Sweeney, who dotted I's and crossed T's and jumped through hoops and got us a grant for working on invasive stuff on the Whitehall Conservation property. I wanted to make sure that everyone knows what a good job he did.
That's great.
Thank you, Ed. That news is usually bittersweet.
Thank you. Thank you, Ed.
In case the people at home didn't pick up on that, the invasive species is bittersweet.
Yeah, I didn't pick up on it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
All right, so we will now start with the police department interviews. The select board will interview three academy police officers. What does an academy police officer mean?
Sure, Chief, explain.
Academy or student police officers, basically being that we will initially get approval to hire them to move on in the process. We have three candidates and it's awfully hard around the state to get people into the academy. So we're looking at a time period of May for the police academy. And then, once they graduate from the academy, they'll come back in front of the board and be sworn in.
So through the chair.
Yes, sir.
By way of explanation.
Yes.
I am respectfully requesting the select board to authorize the hire of one additional police officer. This will bring the total number of officers at HPD up to 28, including three administrative staff and 25 frontline staff. Why the additional officer? Two reasons. The recently concluded strategic plan calls for additional resources and a specific emphasis on the needs that come through the school resource division. Secondly, the budget proposed by the chief through a collaborative process involving the officers in the department calls for the addition of one police officer. Therefore, the question is, why do this now if this has been requested in the FY '21 budget? Here's why. We already have funds in hand through the legacy funds or community agreement. The fifth amendment provides for resources to be made available to the town. Why this was done was that the review and analysis of the impact of the project identified that there will be specific public safety needs brought to the town even before, even before, the income taxes from that property become available. So the answer is, we have funds in hand. Secondly, hiring the position now will give us a head start in bringing an officer onto the force. Here's what this means practically, and this is based on my continuing discussions with the HPD team. Getting the officer to the academy now means that when the schools open next year in September, we will have that school resource officer trained and ready to serve. As we all know, we live and breathe the Boston Marathon here in Hopkinton. We know very well that planning for the marathon is a long-term, labor-intensive process. And thus, having this officer in hand will free up the administrative staff to focus on that very important role. And I've also heard that having an officer in place, trained, will allow our police department to have a minimum of three officers for each shift. And thus, I am respectfully requesting that the board authorize the town manager to fund one additional officer. Again, the main reason being, a need has been identified, it's been articulated in the budget, we have the funds in hand, and this gives us a head start in getting somebody onto the force earlier rather than later.
Thank you, Mr. Kamal. Chief, the 28 officers, that'll give you three officers per shift, is that plus a sergeant? Or is that inclusive of a sergeant?
That will include a sergeant. But we've increased our ranks in that field to have a great deal, I would say about 80% supervision coverage.
All right, so are the applicants here?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Before we go to the applicants, and I look forward to meeting everyone, I'm just a little confused as to who is the hiring committee for this position. In the past, we have not been the hiring committee per se. We are introduced to candidates after they go through a process, and then we generally say hello and kind of say, "Okay, let's proceed." But it seems like we're inserting ourselves a little earlier in that process.
Good question. Not exactly. As we know, the hiring authority for police officers is the select board. And in this case, thankfully, we have had a hiring process in place to replace three police officers. That hiring process went through a written examination, two interview panels, physical and background checks, psychological tests, and we are now at that point where the three officers identified can be moved on to the police academy. And this is the appropriate place of inserting the board as the hiring authority.
Have we done it this way in the past?
I believe, yes. I remember one of the recent officers, was it Officer San Kioni, before going to the academy, came before the board most recently. That's the one I remember.
Well, an individual may come before the board because they have gone through a process, and that process has narrowed it to one individual. It's my understanding that's not where we are tonight here.
Yeah. We have three officers because we have three vacancies. So that translates to one officer per vacancy.
I'm only getting further confused, Mr. Kamal. So we have three officers before us this evening.
Yes.
We have three open positions, is that correct?
Correct.
But we're only going to hire one officer?
We're going to hire three.
Three.
Why did I think we were hiring one?
I did too.
We already hired one.
Yes. Remember, we already hired one.
A few weeks back, I don't know if you were here.
I was not here, okay. So that explains some of it. I was not here for that meeting, I had to step out. Okay, so we hired one then, and we have three additional applicants, we have three additional positions. So we have three and three, Mary Jo.
Okay.
Okay, that's where I was off a little bit. And those three that we're going to talk with this evening, they've been through the hiring process that I thought we would typically have outside discussion.
Exactly. As I say, starting back from.
Okay, so now it makes sense.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. As always, you've clarified my thought.
You're welcome.
So, Chief, do we have all three here?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
All right. So, Mr. Kamal, I have not been part of something as a, certainly as a chair, or even as a select man, board member, however you'd like to say it. So what we'll do now is we'll call the first applicant.
Yes.
We have our packets in front of us.
Yes.
So, who do we have? We have Brittany Firth.
Yeah, Brittany Firth, and in your pocket, we have five questions, one question per board member.
Okay. And then we have John Gardina, is it Gardina? Is that the next one?
Yeah, that's correct.
And then number three would be Nathan Wright. Okay. All right. Hi.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, Brittany, how you doing? I'm Brian.
Brittany, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
So where's Brittany's? Is it three different?
First drop on.
Just pack it out.
Sheet up.
Yeah. Mr. Kamal, these are personnel matters, so these folders are going back to you at the conclusion of this discussion, is that correct?
Correct, yes. And your written comments will become part of the record in the personnel list.
Anything written on here is in that, right?
Yep. Thank you for that, Mr. Hur.
Just trying to keep.
I appreciate that.
The parliamentarian job alive and well.
Proud of that. All right, so each one of us are going to ask you one question. And so by means of introduction, Mr. Kamal, would it be appropriate for us to have her identify herself and tell us a little bit about herself, and then we can ask the question?
Yes, very briefly.
All right. So, Brittany, why don't you introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. My name's Brittany Firth. I graduated from Framingham State University this past spring, from their honors program with a bachelor's in criminology and a minor in psychology. I've been working as a part-time dispatcher in Hopkinton for almost three years, and I've been working as a full-time dispatcher in Ashland as a fire dispatcher since September, full-time.
So why don't we start with Mr. Nasrula? Why don't you open the questions? We have a list of five here, you can ask anyone you want. Your call.
So if you could please describe for me your approach to de-escalating aggressive verbal or physical behavior?
Sure. So, you know, being a dispatcher, a lot of the calls we get, people are very panicked or nervous or even sometimes angry. So through dispatching, I've learned a lot about de-escalating situations just by like using a calm voice, using a calm tone, talking slowly, so I think I could definitely apply that to, you know, real-life situations as an officer.
Mr. Catino.
So here in October, big in community policing. How would you contribute to Hopkins Police Department to make it more proactive within the community?
Definitely. I really love that Hopkinton is like really pro-community policing. You know, we have like the senior dinner and stuff like that, the fishing derby. You know, I've helped out with like National Night Out and stuff like that. I always think it's good to, you know, have involvement with the community, form bonds within the community, you know, reaching out to, you know, people who maybe need help or maybe don't have, giving them resources that maybe they don't have, providing them with resources, someone to reach out to that they feel comfortable with.
Do you have any, if I may do the chair's call, do you have any other ideas for some activities or something, you know, on the line of that, that you might think that we may be lacking that could bring the community in, whether it be to the schools or seniors or whatever?
Sure. Maybe having like a senior liaison appointed, like someone, like a point that people can reach out to. You know, a lot of times seniors are worried to reach out to family members, they don't want them to think that they can't live on their own and stuff like that. So maybe having an officer designated to having, like seniors reach out and to answer their questions and stuff like that would be a good idea.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Mary Jo.
Well, I just want to go back for one minute. You described your approach to de-escalating, and you talked about your approach of dispatching. How about face-to-face, one-on-one?
I think you can still really use like a lot, like remaining calm. You know, people tend to like mirror your actions, so remaining calm, keeping a calm tone, you know, lowering your voice, people tend to lower their voice, you know, just remaining, you know, confident and calm and not letting things get to you and stuff like that.
Okay. What is it about Hopkinton that makes you attractive to you, makes you want to come here?
Definitely. So, you know, I'm familiar with like the roads and the layout of the town just from working here. You know, I've had the pleasure of working with all the officers, and I respect them all a great deal. I'm familiar with all them, you know, and also about like the community policing, a lot of towns, they don't, you know, have community, as much involvement with the community. So I think it's really great that, you know, you're able to form relationships within the community and police officers, like people will reach out to them because they feel comfortable, they don't feel afraid, and I just think it's a really great department, and they're very professional.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, full disclosure, I am a trustee at Framingham State University. I'm sitting on the board trustee's chair. And I believe I've met Brittany in the past.
Possibly, yeah.
She's a very successful student, as I understand it, and I do think I have met her in the past, for good reasons. So welcome, I'm excited to see you here this evening. What is your vision for your professional future?
You know, I would definitely, within the next five years, I'd like to like start my master's in criminology or criminal justice and complete that within the next five years. As far, I mean, I would love to be a full-time police officer, be really involved with like the schools. I would like to be involved more with like the senior community and really just, you know, move forward in the, like move up in the department.
Okay. Thank you.
So after successfully completing your field training, generally, the Hopkinton police officers are alone on patrol. How does the role of teamwork fit into the, in this practice of working alone?
A lot of it's communication, especially through like radios and stuff like that. You always want to make sure you're keeping dispatch and the other officers updated. You know, it really is like a team thing between dispatch, like giving them information so they know where you are, so they know you're safe, and same thing with the other officers, helping each other out when you need it, backing people up.
Yep, that's true. All right. So, do you have any, or board collectively, do we have anything further we'd like to ask there? Brittany? No?
I'd just like to say, you know, thanks for, you know, for coming in, you know, facing five of us at the big table.
Thank you guys for reading with me.
You're really doing, you know, a great job. I just want to commend you for all your answers and, you know, and staying calm under pressure. You're actually answering some of the questions right here by just your demeanor.
Thank you.
So really, thank you very much. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
All right. In summation, anything you want to say to us?
I just want to thank you all for, you know, meeting with me and for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brittany.
Thank you, Brittany.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nice to meet you. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. John Gardina? Is that who's next? Yep.
Hi there. John? Yes, sir. How are you? Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you as well. Thank you for having me.
So, John, what we had Brittany do, we're going to have you all do for, so we're all very consistent in our approach. Why don't you tell us a little bit about us? And, I'm sorry, tell us a little bit about you. We could tell you a little bit about us.
I don't want to hear about us.
And then, and then we'll each ask you one question, and then we'll set you free.
Absolutely. So, nice to meet you all. My name is John Gardina, from Hyde Park, Massachusetts, 29 years old. My recent experiences have allowed me to become a special state police officer at Boston University Medical Center. Once I obtained that certification from passing the interim, intermittent reserve academy, I was also able to become a specialized bike officer, a field training officer for some of the new recruits, as well as a dispatcher. I might be biased, but I personally feel like the environment that that hospital is in is a place where you can really obtain some of the best experience I possibly could, seeing as it's, you know, in a renowned location, also called Methadone Mile, the Mass Ave Albany Street area. You're faced with a lot of different situations, you communicate with a lot of different walks of life, all while also, you know, protecting the campus, the faculty, the staff, the students, and most importantly, the patients. So that's what I have been doing, and, you know, I'm looking forward to this opportunity to hopefully join this department, join this community, and be a part of the Hopkinton.
So you went to Curry College, Arlington, Catholic. Any sports there?
I did, hockey, sir.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Oh, God, here we go.
Not much of a hockey guy.
Skating, anyway.
Rob Davies your coach, by chance? Was he still there then?
He was. Winter, Boston University.
Yep. All right, so, like I said, we're going to ask a couple of questions here for you. So, Mary Jo, why don't you start us off next?
Okay.
Any one, not the same one. Going to mix it up. I'm going to make you read them all.
Well, I wanted to know was what we read the first time and the last time was, would you describe your approach to de-escalating aggressive or verbal and physical behaviors in interaction?
Sure. So, I mean, that's something that we faced a lot in the Boston University Medical Center area. And I think first and foremost, when you go to a scene like that, you want to make sure that everyone is safe, want to make sure that the two parties involved, or the party involved doesn't need any medical attention. But when you approach somebody, you want to try to come in at even keel, you don't want to be, you don't want to come in too hot. I've found from not only the reserve academy, but also my work experience, that when you come almost like at an approachable basis, you know, you can always move higher if needed. So you want to kind of find a middle ground and see, you know, sir, ma'am, can I help you? What seems to be the problem? Or what transpired? What do you need help with? When you have that approachableness and that mentality, I feel as people will kind of find that common ground and slowly try to trust you. And trusted, I think, was what really helps de-escalate situations, they know that you're not just somebody who's going to, you know, automatically assume that they're wrong, point fingers first, you really want to hear both sides. That's kind of how I would approach that.
Thank you.
Mr. Hur.
Mr. Ted Stone, if it would be okay, I'd like to ask one question slightly off-topic, but I think pertinent. John, in your application, it says you've got one credit left to receive your BA.
Yes, sir.
Is that still current? Are you working on that?
Yes, sir.
And your plan is to finish that?
Absolutely.
Great. Second question. How would you contribute to the Hopkinton Police Department to make it more proactive within the community?
Well, one of the things I've found is, you know, Hopkinton was labeled one of the safest towns, and from my approach, I feel as if aggressive patrols will lead to crime deterrents. So being visible, having a community policing aspect where people in the community see you, you're out and about, you're approachable for them to come for you if you need any help, and being aggressive on those direct patrols of the buildings of the areas that are most problematic, for lack of a better term, is something that, you know, would help the town of Hopkinton in that aspect.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Catino. Great certifications.
Thank you, sir.
Way to go. You know, in that vein, what's your vision for your professional future?
Well, sir, I've been working very hard to, you know, obtain a position like this. I found that Hopkinton would be a great fit. I'm looking to get out of the city. I want to be a part of a community that really, I can dig my roots in. I actually took a drive up here yesterday with my girlfriend, who is a big support system of mine, and we sat down at the Spoon over on Long Street. Never had breakfast there, and, you know, when we sat there and we were looking around, it really was refreshing to see that everyone who walked through that door said hi or knew everybody in that place. And you don't have that in the city. And so with that, with going through this process, I really feel as if Hopkinton would be a great fit for a 30-plus-year career warranted. And that's something that I want, and I think that's something that my family and my girlfriends are on board with, and that's my drive. I really want to be a career police officer in a community like this. And just the fact that a board such as yourself wants the applicants and the candidates to come forth and speak and meet you guys, it really speaks volumes, and thank you guys for having me.
Great answer. Thank you very much. Your friend.
John, you're doing great.
Thank you, sir.
Very impressed. I'd like you to kind of expand on what it is about Hopkinton and its police department, specifically the police department itself, that attracted you to want to work in this community.
Absolutely.
Especially coming from the city.
Well, first and foremost, I really admired the fact that Hopkinton has their own private test. I think that gives a real even keel for all the applicants involved. Living in the city, if you're not a veteran and taking a civil service exam, it kind of sets you back a little bit. I felt as if my current experiences, my credentials that I've received from that experience would definitely be an asset for a department like this. It's a very progressive department. It's looking to expand, it's looking to hire. Everyone that I've met in this process has been nothing short but great. And, you know, being, not only being a safe town, but being an area where I could see myself living and digging my roots in, like I stated before, really gives me that, you know, drive. I'm very excited about this. I don't think words could actually really describe how badly I want this position. But I definitely, I definitely see myself and my future family being here.
Thank you. All right, John. So after successfully completing field training, generally, Hopkinton police officers are alone on patrol. How does the role of teamwork fit into the practice of working alone?
I think teamwork is everything nowadays in police work and law enforcement. You know, maybe not pertaining to Hopkinton per se, but I think law enforcement now is really portrayed in a negative light, unfortunately. And I feel like having that team mentality and having known that you have an officer not too far away, they have your back if anything does go south, you know, that's a huge, you know, huge weight lifted off your shoulders per se. Sometimes situations can get hairy, but, you know, when you really trust your, for lack of a better term, brothers, being a part of the department, and females, of course, it's a nice mentality to have, and you can really accomplish a lot because when you're dealing with a situation, and let's just say for any odd reason that individually you're talking to picks something about you that they don't like, knowing that you have a backup that could come in and give a different approach, speak to somebody in a different light that they might have a better way of reasoning with. So I think the team mentality is definitely something that is most necessary in a law enforcement aspect.
So how long did you work at BU or at Methadone Mile?
Three years, sir.
Three years. So I have a friend that's a pretty high-ranking guy on the Mass State Police.
Yes, sir.
And I spent four years working at the maximum security prison. Didn't live there, I worked there. The guy from the state police said that all the college in the world, you go to 15 years of college, it doesn't equal one year of work experience. And some of his best recruits were people that did 10 months to a year as a CO, they were able to sniff out a criminal. Anything more than a year, he didn't want. But 10 months to a year, saw the anatomy of what a real criminal is, how they can baffle you with their stories and cover it up. I think that you, with those three years' experience on Methadone Mile, chances are you're going to be able to find someone with, you know, you're going to be able to kind of, to work your way through the stories of the opioids, and you'll be able to see signs and symptoms of if they're on opioids and things like that. That's giant in today's society, that opioids is everything. And it's nice, I find it kind of fitting that I'm asking you about teamwork, where you were a hockey player at Curry in Arlington. So obviously, you can't, like teamwork has been bred into you. If you played four years with Rob Davies, I know Rob pretty well.
Two. He left unfortunately halfway through, but yeah.
So if you played for Rob Davies at all, there was no choice on teamwork. Teamwork was ingrained in you, and same thing in Arlington. So the teamwork is great. You're coming into a department that is one of the best in the state, if not the country. They all work very well together, you know, it's just a, I call it a wall-oil machine. We said to Jessica the other day, when she came through the interview process, that it's kind of like hitting the Powerball after you hit all the other numbers on your lottery ticket. So it's a great time to work in. I like your resume, I like the fact that you've worked in the field that is kind of prevalent in today's society, and I like your, I like your concept on the teamwork. So that's the only question that I have. Board, before we move on- Board, before we move on, does anyone have anything? John, what was your plus-minus in college?
Uh, well, if, when I saw the ice, first off, uh, probably in the negative, unfortunately. Yeah, I, I didn't play a huge role, but you know, um, I grew, grew up playing hockey my entire life, baseball. I'm also the oldest of three, so I feel like I've always taken on more of like a, a leadership and parental role with them, given my, uh, my family dynamics. So I feel like, uh, I can definitely bring a lot to, to the department when warranted, so. Thank you guys again for allowing me to come out here and it's very nice to meet you all.
Thank you.
So it's one more class for that BA, right?
Yes, sir. Well, test out, sir.
I'm sorry?
It's a test out, sir.
Test out?
Yes, sir.
But you're gonna get that done?
Absolutely, sir.
Don't call him sir, it's gonna go right to his head. All right, John.
Thank you, John. Thank you all very much.
All right. So next up, we have Nathan Wright. Nathan, how are you?
Very good, sir.
Have a seat.
Thank you.
Welcome. So Nathan, we, um, we're all gonna ask you one question. And, um, before we ask the question, we've asked the other two applicants to go ahead and tell us a little bit about themselves. We'll ask the question, we'll close, and then, uh, we'll set you free.
Perfect, sir.
All right.
So, um, obviously, my name's Nathan Wright. I have a bachelor's degree from Pittsburgh State University and a master's degree from the University of Massachusetts-Low. I've also, uh, graduated a Reserve Academy from, uh, Boylston in 2016. Uh, I've been in the Army for about eight years. I started off as an enlisted soldier, as a forward observer. Uh, after about three years, I commissioned as a second lieutenant in the 101 Infantry from ROTC.
101?
Uh, 1A1, excuse me. So, um, after, uh, I graduated, I did a few security jobs, um, various unarmed armed security. And then I deployed in 2017 to 18 to Egypt, where I led a platoon of soldiers on a peacekeeping mission. Uh, basically, what we did was, we kept the peace between Egypt and Israel. After that, I came back and, uh, began a job at the College of the Holy Cross as a police officer. Uh, I'm married, I have a wife, uh, we've known each other since, uh, high school. Well, we've only been married for about seven months now, um, dated since, uh, March 2015. I live in Worcester, no kids, and hopefully one day I'll get a dog, 'cause they're awesome.
Yep.
I have a, a few hobbies. Uh, one of the weirder ones is I actually, uh, kind of like ferment foods. So I just started fermenting hot sauce and sauerkraut. My platoon sergeant actually got me into it. It's not something that's pretty common, but it's a neat little thing. You gotta kind of watch this stuff, and it's a little bit of science involved, so I like doing that.
What's the benefit of fermenting hot sauce?
So actually, it has really good flavor. It's, it's very, the flavor is really well-developed after the peppers ferment. And if you don't add vinegar to it, you get a probiotic effect that's good for your, uh, digestion.
So you're saying if I put fermented hot sauce on my chicken wings, it's healthy?
Yes.
Perfect.
That's my justification.
I like to have your comment.
Can I actually add to my wife on Sunday?
All right. So, uh, Mr. Cutino, why don't you start us off?
Okay, all right, just, oh, shoot, that's what I, that's what I wanted to ask. One second.
Mary Jo, why don't you start us off?
Okay. Uh, well, I have, one thing, I have a Korean sister-in-law, I used to have one. And you have not tasted anything hotter than her kimchi in this whole world.
That's on my list of things to try.
Whoa. And it goes down, and then it gets hot. It doesn't get hot first, no warnings. Okay, um, I'm gonna start off with the same question that I've been asking everybody. How would you de-escalate, uh, an aggressive situation, both verbally and physically?
So when it comes to de-escalation, I've learned it, it really depends on the individual and then the circumstance involved. Um, I, I've dealt with, uh, a few violent individuals in my time, uh, as a police officer and doing security beforehand, and, uh, only one time have I not been able to de-escalate that situation, unfortunately. So what I've found is talking to people in a calm manner and kind of just paying attention to what they're kind of focusing on is the best way to figure out what you need to do to kind of bring them back down to a level where they might not act out violently or continue to escalate themselves. Uh, it, it really depends on the person. It, I've seen all kinds of reactions. And sometimes people are just acting in a manner just 'cause they want someone to actually listen to them. So you have to, you have to be an active listener in order to successfully de-escalate someone. And use that verbal judo that you learn through various ways of communication or talking to people that you've seen before.
Thank you.
Welcome, ma'am.
Mr. Herr.
Nathan, after successfully completing field training, generally, Hockington police officers are alone on patrol. How does the role of teamwork fit into this practice of working alone?
So while you were alone in the cruiser, you're, you're not actually alone. Um, you still have your fellow officers on the road, and if you need help, you know that they're gonna be coming to aid you. And if they need help, you'll be going to aid them. So while, while you're individual in the cruiser, you're not actually alone because you have your entire team on shift with you, willing to help you and you willing to help them in any situation that requires it.
Thank you.
Sir?
Our friend.
Nathan, seems like you have, uh, quite the experience.
Thank you, sir.
And, um, it's very impressive. Um, what do you, what is your vision for your professional future?
So, um, on the civilian side, uh, I will obviously would like to, uh, be hired and become a police officer here. Uh, within five to ten years, I'd like to become a sergeant so that I can, uh, kind of develop newer officers and expand my leadership role that I've taken from the military into my civilian career. Um, and that's kind of where I see myself within five to ten years in civilian side. Uh, and in the military side, within about two years, I should be a company commander, leading about a hundred soldiers. And then in about ten years, a major overseeing battalion operations.
So you're continuing with, continuing with your military?
Yes, sir. Um, I, I've been in the military for eight years now. I intend to, uh, continue for another twelve years and, uh, maybe retire after my twenty years in the Guard.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Joe?
Excellent. Okay, well, um, Hockton was really big on community policing. You know, it, it, that's what I believe led to our great, uh, safety rating as one of the safest communities in the country. Um, how would you contribute to Hockton Police Department to make it, um, more proactive in the community? Do you have any ideas of, of, uh, expanding that?
So, uh, where I work now is, it's a reactive department, uh, unfortunately. Um, I try to be more proactive than some of my fellow officers at Holy Cross. And the way I do that is I actually go out. I go into the buildings, I speak to students. I, I look around and see where there might be problems and try to go out, talk to people to figure out solutions to those problems. Um, police officers work for the community, not against it. So as, as police officers, we need to actually interact with the community, talk to them and actively listen to them to figure out what the problems they are having and be part of the solution with them to solve them.
Excellent. Thank you very much. You've really, uh, to, uh, Mr. Nash's rule is comments. Get, you've got the experience that you bring into the town.
Thank you, sir.
Nathan, first and foremost, thank you for your service.
Thanks for the support.
Um, what is it about the, uh, about Hockton and its police department that attracted you to wanna work in this community as a police officer?
So, um, while I was working, uh, one of my normal shifts, I was approached by Sergeant Brennan. Um, he had, he started talking to me like, hey, what do you wanna do? Do you wanna stay here? I told him, hey, I wanna be a municipal police officer, I can serve a wider community. So he told me that Hockington was actually taking a test. So me and him got to talking, I told him some of my experience, he, he suggested that I apply. So I did, and then I started researching the town. And I've seen a lot of good things on the town website, uh, the police Facebook page, the YouTube channel, uh, the news, uh, the, the online, uh, news website. There's a, there's a lot of good things to this town. And, um, talking to my wife, we, we've kind of like looked at Hockton as a place where we can actually settle down and raise our family, really. Uh, it's great schools, the community is great. It's very, uh, inclusive as well, which is something that I like. So it, it's just, it's something, one of those like small towns that has a sense of community that attracts me to where I wanna be. The military has a, it's a weird community, but there's just a, a kinship that I wanna have in my, it's kind of like everyday life that I don't necessarily get from other places.
Yep. It's a great answer.
Thanks, sir.
Um, board, Mr. Herr.
Mr. Ted, a little off-topic if I could, please. Uh, Nathan, uh, the town of Hockton had a student involved in the Holy Cross crash, unfortunately.
And?
Uh, yeah, and, um, so how is the Holy Cross community as a whole doing following that tragedy?
They're hurting. Um, obviously, we had, uh, Ms. Wright, uh, passed away, and we have other students who are still in serious condition. Um, we've been trying to do what we can to assist with that. Uh, we will be, our officers will be providing some transports to the students as they return to campus so that we can kind of ease a burden on them getting around to class. Um, we have our therapy dog, Gracie, uh, Golden Doodle. She's not fully trained yet, but we've been bringing her out to, into the community to the students so that they can kind of get a little bit of comfort in that. And, um, the Holy Cross alumni community has actually done a lot for those students as well. People have been donating hotels, um, private jets that, to fly family members down. And, um, one of, uh, the students actually raised a quarter of a million dollars to put forward to his classmates, which is something that he didn't even expect either. So the, the entire committee at Holy Cross has kind of come together to support these students and their families. And it, it's really nice to see that.
Thank you.
So it, it'll, it'll take a little bit of time for them to heal, but time will eventually help them heal.
Sometimes when it, you know, I, I don't consider Worcester or Holy Cross to be a quote "small" community, but sometimes it takes sentinel events such as something like that, or if something happens here, you see where the, everybody kind of pulls together and gets along, puts all the petty stuff behind them and, and sees things for what it is. So, uh, it's nice to see that when a sentinel event like that happens, uh, your department and your community at Holy Cross pulls together and that you, you notice that and kind of foster it, so.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, you, you answered the, uh, community policing question right there. You, you had, you had all of those ideas right in your head, so, uh, you've, great follow-up.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Camalo, move us forward, please.
Thank you. Um, again, through the chair, Nathan, thank you for your service.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, at, at this point, um, if the board is so inclined, respectfully, the chair will entertain a motion to sponsor Bretonne Faith, John Giardina, Nathan Wright to attend police academy training, and to appoint Bretonne Faith, Jordan Giadon, John Giardina, and Nathan Wright as full-time police officers upon successful completion of the academy.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion?
Mr. Camalo and candidates, please don't take any of these questions personally at all. Really, it's not balls directly. Tell me about the financial piece of this again, I'm a little confused. So we have, in our budget for FY20, funds for these positions, correct? Or no? Or those are allocated elsewhere?
In the FY20 budget, we have funding for two positions. How do we fund the third position? As I said previously, we have now received funding from legacy funds to support public safety. We will, if the board is so inclined, use a portion of those funds to fund the third position.
When will our financial obligation for these three positions begin?
On completion of the, okay.
No. The town's financial obligation begins at the time the board decides to appoint them. Uh, and the board, the, the town will be funding their positions through the academy process.
So that said? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
So in effect, they come on the payroll now, they're paid while they go through the academy, and when they come out of the academy, we reappoint or finalize the appointment one more time?
Yes.
And they're become full-time officers?
Yes.
But the, the financials kick in now. There's two of the three funded through the budget and one funded through the legacy clause in the HCA, which is a perfectly correct way to do it. Uh, okay, I'm good.
So chief, what will these guys and girls be doing between now and May when they go to the academy?
Oh, so we're going, we're going to pay them before they go to the academy?
I'm sorry?
The academy starts in April. Are we going to appoint them now?
So what happens between now and May?
Yeah. Yeah, that's my question.
The appointment date will be decided as part of the administrative process. We'll have to sit down with the chief, understand when they may be going to the academy, and that date will be decided.
Okay, so when, if we appoint them tonight, uh, they don't go on the payroll starting tomorrow, they go on the payroll pending a, a, a successful negotiation of probably, you know, the day they go to the academy or something like that, right?
Correct. In other words, the appointment will be effective at a date to be decided administratively by the police chief.
Okay.
Is that in your motion?
So.
Or is that in my motion?
So revised.
Yeah, so I, I want that in the motion, please, that terminology there. And if it's tomorrow, that's fine. I just wanna make sure we account for the financials of this so the residents understand where we're at. So it's at a date to be determined through the administrative process.
Thank you.
And you're seconding that?
I accept this, I second, yeah. So chief and deputy chief, these three applicants that we have here tonight, these are the three applicants that you think would be best served out of the interview pool that you went through?
Yes, they, uh, all three, uh, did an excellent job in the written portion, and with, uh, the two boards, uh, they are down to the, uh, the, um, they were within the top five. There was a candidate that unfortunately, uh, had to drop out of the process, and we hired, um, uh, the other officer at an earlier date who already had the academy. So, uh, they, all three are within the top five, and they're all excellent candidates. Uh, one of the things I'm excited about is adding, uh, a little more diversity to our police department. Uh, with, with the, these three hires, we'll, we'll now be up to, uh, three females on the police department, which is kind of rare in law enforcement.
I thought you were saying, you're hiring three females. I'm like, they're just.
No, 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 no. It'll bring the total up to the three. As y'all know, uh, we, uh, lost, uh, Linda Higgins, who was a great officer on our police department, to, uh, retirement. And, um, you know, we're trying to.
Yep.
Fill her legacy.
Yep, yep. I saw Linda last week. It was nice to.
The deputy chief here in all, in on all these as well?
He was, he was, uh, you were in interview panel number two, correct?
Two, yes.
With the chief? Okay. And you're in agreement with the chief?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. I think, I'm proud of all the candidates we've brought forward and the people that we have onboard. We've hired a lot of people and interviewed far more, and as I sat in the audience and watched them, it's just an example of the quality that they possess, and the answers were just so spot-on. If this was a first-round candidate, it would be a no-brainer and probably a pre-drawn conclusion that they're going to go all the way. So, I already congratulated them, and we're proud of them, so glad to have them.
So Depp, as I was sitting here going through the interview process, I was trying to equate it, trying to put myself in this seat when you went through the process.
Well, this was smaller.
This was definitely smaller. And I look at, at these three candidates in comparison to some of the, the all-stars that, that came on back then, and apples and oranges, my friend, apples and oranges. Nothing personal, you're right there with them, but I think.
Come on, I'm going to stay on.
That's best, that's best.
Sure. Thank you for the compliment, I guess, towards me.
Yes, you got it, you got it. All right, so we've had a, a motion that's seconded, is there any further discussion?
So we have, we talked a little bit about the process and the timeline and this sort of administrative thing that we have to sort out, so I'm looking at the candidates now. Does that work with everybody, as far as, we don't know exactly when this happens, but when it happens, that's all good? Right, everybody understands, I mean, this is, this police stuff is new to me in general after 12 years, but still new. So everyone's good?
Yes, sir.
All right, no further discussion? Mr. Kamala, did you have something?
If I may.
You may.
Through the chair, as I explained earlier, this has been a very long process. It may be appropriate to ask either the chief or the deputy chief or the HR director to recognize the individuals who have participated through this hiring process and made this possible.
Sure.
Absolutely, we had a great board, first board at the station, consisted of Sergeant O'Neil, Molly McGaffin, of course Jessica Lawrence was on both interviews, Brian San Chioli, the canine, he left his dog out in the interview, Arthur Schofield, who's a great new young sergeant, they were on that, that first panel. I'm not forgetting anybody for that first panel.
Nope, that was right.
Our second panel was myself, the deputy, and Sergeant Aaron O'Neil, and Jessica, and they all did a great job. We all know that HR has run short a little bit right now, and, you know, we've really been asking a lot of them.
Mm-hmm.
With the list, we started with a list of 75 candidates that took the test, and we narrowed it down to a, a good, good five candidates. And this'll be the first time, probably in the history of Hopkin and PD, that three police officers have attended the academy at the same time.
Nice. Excellent.
We're growing.
HR, you're all on board with this, with these choices? Yes, let the record show.
You got one thumbs up and one nod, yes.
Yes, I am.
First in HR, huh?
Yeah. All right, so we've got a motion on the table, we have a second, we have no more further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Extensions?
I carry.
Great, thank you. Thank you, guys and girls.
Do you want to do a picture?
After, you want to do a picture? After the academy?
I think so.
Yeah.
After the academy.
In their shiny uniform.
In their uniform and badge.
Now they all go battle over seniority in the academy.
Yeah, goes by height. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks. Good luck. Nice to meet you all.
You too. All right, so, that being said, we will move on to the FY '21 budget discussion. Mr. Kamala?
If I may, Mr.
HR stuff back in.
If you'd like us, give us three or four minutes. To join the town.
Watch those wires.
Yeah, it's party time.
Agenda in there.
Share it.
Couldn't put in straight up cash. I think he accounted for it, assuming it was going to go through, but it's still hard.
Mr. Kamala?
But we're going to talk about that tonight, I think. What is that? Wow.
Okay, thank you.
Is this in our school college, or no?
Sitting next to Tim, what's the idea?
When the music stops, grab a seat.
Excellent. And if you guys have a budget advisory group meeting today?
Yes.
How'd that go? So we have everyone else represented, or any of this?
Nice, let me, yeah, they do sometimes book up, but.
Mr. Kamala, is there anybody not here?
Not Mike, yeah, yeah.
No, everybody's here. Okay.
All right, welcome aboard, everyone. Good evening. So, I see we have everybody here, so, Mr. Kamala, why don't you kind of take us through a overview of what we're planning on doing tonight? This is just going to be a quick three or four-minute thing, of you guys explaining to us about your budget, closer to three than four. And take it away, Mr. Kamala.
Great. Again, the instruction is pretty straightforward. You explain your budget, identifying what's different from previous years, and what's really important to find going forward. On January 7th, and again on January 21st, I reported to the board on our budget development process. The status as of that last report was that I had issued a budget document that was in compliance with the explicit direction to deliver a starting point document that limits any spending increase to the two-and-a-half percent rise in the tax levy, and to new tax revenue growth from new construction or improvements. The constrained budget provided an amount for the school department that was 1.3 million dollars, less than requested, and approximately 291,000 below what was requested by the other town departments. In the nine days since our last discussion on this topic, we have received some excellent news. Governor Becker has released a state budget proposal that calls for state aid to Hopkinton that is $356,000 higher than the projection we used in developing our budget. And on the expense side, the state budget shows that charges to us for state programs we are obliged to participate in will be $126,000 lower than we planned for. The net effect of these two changes is an improvement in our budget position of $482,000. And those newly identified funds could be used to fill a significant portion of the identified unmet need. Of course, there is still a lot of work to be done. As in the case every year, the spending plan under review deserves close scrutiny, and it is getting that scrutiny again tonight, the third specific budget discussion by the full select board in the month of January. Further, the budget working group, which includes leadership representation from the select board, the school committee, and the appropriation committee, has been meeting weekly to discuss budget developments and will continue to do so. Certainly, there have been force in inflammatory reports and rumors in the community that we are at the tail end of the budget process. But the truth is very much the opposite of that. We are in the very early phases of public discussion and review of this budget. We are continuing to refine and explore alternatives on the spending side. And as shown by our update on the proposed state budget, we are continuing to look closely at the revenue side as well. As I wrote in the budget transmitter memo and reiterated at our last meeting, the one town, one solution approach will be central to our eventual success in building towards a budget that balances community needs and tax affordability in the coming weeks and months. And at this point, with the chair's permission, we will now ask the department heads to go through their budgets. And with your permission, I'll let the CFO call out the departments to make their presentations.
You're going on the clock, Tim? Perfect, three minutes and 30 seconds, that's what each of you people have. The first section is the select board, and that is level funded, so we'll move right over to that one. $2,000 to support the expenses of the select board.
What expenses?
Apparently, there's occasional travel.
By members of the select board?
In fact, it's a conference registration and participation. Most recently, we had members participating in the MMA. We also pay for the subscription to receive the MMA publications.
Okay, then the town manager's budget is next.
Yes. And to be clear, I think I understand why Mr. Herr is asking the question. The select board members are not paid positions.
Right, right, just purely for expenses.
Exactly.
I have never filed an expense before with the town of Hopkinton. Just saying.
Why don't you run again? That's where the free cash comes from.
Exactly.
Yeah, that ain't gonna happen. The town manager budget?
The increase of 2.6% is for personal services, and expenses are going up by 11.1%. Again, this is in relation to some of the expenses that we have to put together for our transparency, as well as public education processes.
And the document we're working from is enclosure four of the budget memo, if you have that with you, which is the line-by-line budget. So our plan is to walk through enclosure four and enclosure five, which is the capital budget tonight. And that brings me to account 131, the appropriation committee, and, I'm sorry, account 131. And account 131 is available to support extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures at the discretion of the appropriation committee. The $125,000 appropriation requested is consistent with the FY '19 amount, which was unspent and reverted to free cash at the end of that year, and with this year's appropriation, which is unspent now. It's really a reserve account, state law would allow us to put as much as 3.6 million in that account, so that the appropriation committee could deal with true emergencies. Town has always chosen to fund it at a much lower level, with the plan to go back to town meeting if there are major emergency arises. Hang on a second, we're. Sure. So at the bottom left of every page, it says which enclosure they are, and we're on enclosure four.
So I have page two, I don't have page one. I do not have page one.
Oh.
It's on our iPads.
Yes, it's also on the iPads. If you don't have it on the iPad, copy, check on the iPads.
Somebody copied, looks like somebody copied, single-sided copies of a double-sided document, so everyone on the odd pages would have a very easy night of it tonight if we didn't fix this, so we'll get right on it. So that's a level funding. As you get that document up, I'll just talk next about the next several accounts. Accounts 133 through 145 cover all the finance functions. And together, you know, they're all broken out among accounting, procurement, the assessor, but together, these accounts total $1,191,000 in costs. That amount is 1.24% of the proposed general fund budget. For your, so for your finance function, you're paying 1.2% of your general fund operating budget. That's down from 1.28% last year. As the town grows and we hold our finance costs steady, we're supporting operations for a lower fraction of the budget each year, and that is our, our plan and our intention, and we're doing it this year. Of the nearly 1.2 million we're asking for, 76% of the cost is for staff salaries for our 11 staff, and 24% is for other expenses. Taken together, this combined budget request is up $45,000 from last year across all the divisions in finance. Almost all of the net increase, 94% of the increase we're asking for, is related to the cost of expanding our appraisal and tax appeal defense program from $109,000 to $151,500. And you can see that if you have page one of enclosure four as a third line in account 141. We believe that this spending to support our tax actions is a prudent investment for the town. For example, from FY '18 to FY '20, we spent $10,000 a year or $30,000 on personal property tax audits, and they resulted in $512,000 in new tax revenue collected. So the only area of budget growth we have is for additional work in this area that helps us do two things: collect taxes that are not being taxed, being collected, and make the tax burden fairer across all taxpayers. And a big part of that involves the LNG litigation. There are several very small increases and decreases, other specific lines that offset each other. Without the increase for appraisal expenses, our budget request would be down from last year.
Tim, what's up with the 75K for personal services under procurement and grants?
So last year, Ben's position had been lumped in under accounting, and we broke it out for more visibility. So you should see the accounting line.
Accounting, okay, minus 86, got it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no question, legal budget?
Yeah. We are projecting a $20,000 increase, and this is accounted for specifically on the town council services, we have an increase in the number of litigation issues before the town. And then on the special labor council, we have at least three contract negotiations, one of which we project may end up in arbitration. And then human resources, personal services, only a 2% increase. And then the transition contingency is going down by 35%, and the reason being, you may recall this, last year, as we're finalizing the budget, we put the salary for three firefighters under the personnel contingency. We successfully secured a grant for that, and we have reduced the contingency by that amount, 175,890.
Mr. Kamala, if you can go back a little bit, one second. Tim, Tim, do you have some of your colleagues here with you this evening?
Yes, sir.
This is, so for those of you that are new to this, this should be a free-for-all, not a total free-for-all, he'll go crazy, but a free-for-all of ideas, and if somebody has a concern or an opinion, now is the time to raise your hand, okay? That doesn't mean we're going to solve it tonight, but we need to know if any individual managing a group or a department or a piece of a department or any of that, if you have an issue, now's the time to get it on the table. We want this to be a very collegial, wide-open thing. So, Tim, for your team, which encompasses a couple of folks, you guys feel comfortable with what he's projecting and what he's talking about for these various budgets?
Yes, yes, sir.
So you feel good about it?
Yes, sir.
Nothing's missing, like, there's going to be a problem for us going forward?
We've covered minor costs of the audit increase, and we've covered costs to do, roll out more modules of Munis, which has been a major investment for us, and that's in there as an item carried forward from last year.
Okay. And we're probably going to do this again at some point between now and May, but it's just, you know, just want everybody to feel free to just say, no, that's crazy, I don't want to do that, and raise your hands.
You know, I'd invite John Neese, who's sitting in the back, to comment. He's, he's the one who has the increase in the assessing, and is responsible for supporting our position in these tax cases and the appeals that we have to fight. Anything to add, John?
Nope.
Okay.
Good, moving on. Human resources is good. Here's HR.
Yeah. I gave the update on HR. IT.
Josh.
One and a half percent increase in the personal services line, $4,541 for yearly increase for staff. And on the expense side, held the increase to 1% at $5,308. Really no major changes. There's two or three cost drivers that contributed mostly to that increase, and then there were a number of offsets through cost containment and contract negotiations and other places, but really that 1%, no, no major, no major change.
If I may, through the chair, through the budget process, we have encouraged Josh to spend some time with his counterpart on the school side to see if there are any opportunities to collaborate on a couple of their initiatives. Josh's original budget was, I think as you can see, was higher than what the town manager is recommending, and we're thinking that perhaps we may be able to make him whole if there's an opportunity for him to collaborate with Ashok from the school side.
All right. Good?
Hey, Lee.
Town clerk?
For clerk and elections.
Good evening. So, as you can see with town clerk's side, we have a decrease in expenses. We did find a few efficiencies over the course of the year. I like to remind myself of finding little things we can do to make things a little bit cheaper, including more electronic condition of notices and things like that. The slight increase due to personnel services, 1.4 is just due to stipend potentially coming online for, for employees, including myself, the potential of having my certified Massachusetts municipal clerk status within the next fiscal year. As for elections and registration, as many of you have heard before, when it comes to elections, budgeting for it is kind of like a roller coaster. You have the years where you're just going to have a town meeting and a town election, and then you have the years where you're going to have primaries and presidential elections and early voting and everything else. and early voting, and everything else in between.
Special town meetings?
That as well, and special town elections.
Special town elections.
Monday, 7:00 AM.
Yes, please remember to show up.
Often.
So, if we actually look and see the, the numbers from FY19, where we also had a similar number of elections we're going to have for this coming fiscal year, it's very close in number. The reason there is a slight increase from that year is primarily due to the increase in the minimum wage.
Sir?
Connor, you, your position is voted on at town meeting to set the annual salary of elected officials.
That's correct.
That's the only elected official in town that gets paid?
That's correct.
A full-time position. Does this budget anticipate a passage of an article that you're considering?
Yes, it would anticipate a passage of an article, and then of roughly about a 3% increase, but it's obviously open to town meeting to decide whether or not they deem it worthy.
But that number's in here, so it won't be a surprise.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So your election and registration, you're there too, right? You covered that?
Yep.
Land use?
On the land use side this year, there are no changes to positions, or programs, or services, so it's level service with an increase in, in the personal services due to merit raises from this current year, and some, we have blessed with longtime employees who are still grandfathered under longevity portion of our handbook, and so there's a little bit of that as well.
So, Elaine?
How are we doing on the 51 and a half, whatever that's called? Is that well-funded, and that covers a lot of stuff for us?
Actually, two of our positions, their salary is solely funded from the building permit fees, and not under this budget.
Right, so that's separate?
Right.
And that's, that's, that's whole, it's not going to be a problem enough to move anything around?
True.
Good. Anyone here from the trail committees? I don't see anyone. Green committee, there's nothing. Zeros across.
No.
No one from trails, okay, good, moving on. Town hall?
Yeah, in fact, if the board has any questions on the trail committees, Elaine, the assistant town manager, may be able to answer those questions.
So there's $36,000 there?
From the open space.
Yeah. I'm going to ask you. So, as we know, open space.
What is the open space?
So this year, Open Space is proposing to do some maintenance on property under their control and management. They haven't done that before, but they feel a huge need, as you saw Ed earlier tonight, talking about removal of invasive species, cleaning up the properties, doing some trail work, so they are deciding to take on some management responsibilities that they have had, and finally putting some, some effort into it. Same goes for the Trail Coordination Management Committee. They are taking on the management responsibilities that Upper Charles did before, so it's being passed on to the TCMC, and Upper Charles is just going to focus on creation of the Upper Charles Trail.
So I'm a little confused about those numbers, though. Upper Charles has got a $2,200 variance, $2,300 variance downward, and the Trails Coordination Management is kicking in 36, which is its first year, really, right? So, Upper, Upper Charles is still getting $50,000, correct?
They're spending that on basically design and engineering for the Upper Charles.
For the Upper Charles. And then we're adding to that the new organization, the $36,000 for that organization, correct?
Some of that comes from the Upper Charles, but it is new expense.
And Jane's good with her number?
In fact, yeah, in fact, through the chair, leading to the formulation of the budget, Elaine and I sat down with the chairs of all the three committees, and we went through the budget and distributed it, as is shown now.
And Peter's good with his number?
Peter's good with his number, Jane is good with his number, and Open Space are good.
Town hall? You done? Town hall?
Yeah, again, no change in the expenses.
Okay. Other general government?
No change in the expenses.
We've got a $40,000 increase in water enterprise and fire protection?
Right. Yeah, that's, that's the transfer from water enterprise to fire protection.
From what?
Yeah. It's the transfer from the water enterprise for, for fire protection. This is the longstanding discussion regarding some payment that was arrived at several years ago.
It's to, as you, I think you were saying, it's to the water enterprise for hydrants.
Yes.
So the general government pays the water enterprise a per hydrant fee for all the hydrants in town to support that as a public service for fire protection, which is, shouldn't be borne by the people who buy water to make coffee and take showers. So the hydrant fee is separate, and the, the rate per meter was set several years ago, and this year they did a census of the hydrants and found out we have more hydrants than we thought we had, and that's why this amount is going up. Is that right, John?
Absolutely correct.
So, so water enterprise, which is a separate form of taxation, where the water enterprise is going for rate payers, right?
Right.
That's going to have an increase in pressure upward to cover this $46,000, is that correct?
It will receive the $40,664 from the general fund into its revenue stream.
A water, water enterprise gets the cash, and the town funds pay that cash.
Correct.
So that's why it's a $40,000 increase on the budget line, but...
It's a $40,000, it's a $40,000 increase, as Tim said, we went out and we did a GPS location of all our hydrants, and we discovered that the actual number, as opposed to the number that's been...
So it's fair that all of us are paying into the water enterprise for that? I agree. Okay, makes sense.
Good. Police?
Overall increase of 1.6%. Main increases due to CDA, as you know, as coal, as tollboxes, with a pretty strict increase, and possibly additional cost. Yeah, and police department, probably our other works of savings that we're slowly identifying as we move out of the EMT, rounding up requiring laws, we, we have to train, so it's not to see that through attrition, not saving us money.
Good, thank you. Communications. Megan, welcome. I don't think I've had you in front of us before.
How do you have that?
All right, let's see what you got.
She's so excited.
So it is a 15% overall increase for the communications budget, but most of that personal services are to our, this current year's contract negotiations, as well as the new salary position that we didn't have line for in the past, as well as trying to, as far as expenses, work towards sustaining ourselves, and be less of a, an offshoot of, mostly of the police department because we live there, to, you know, sustain ourselves in the sense of supplying ourselves, and also learn to start a community outreach-type program. Police have one, fire have one of their own, but nobody knows who we are, so we want to get our faces out there and get the residents to realize, or to, you know, learn what we do.
So one additional position is in that 65K?
Not a full position. Essentially, what it was, was the director's position that was created, so the dispatch supervisor position was essentially eliminated, and then the difference in salary is added in, as well as the contracts.
And then, the outreach is some of that money in the 25, plus just being more independent department from the police.
Yes.
Makes sense, thank you.
Chief Slaman?
Good evening.
Good evening.
For my personnel budget, the main change going into FY21 is, we received the grant for the staffing for additional firefighter emergency response grant, which is implementing for firefighters this year. As Kamal stated, there's some movements of monies that fulfill this year's obligation, and then it's carried into FY21. It fits the plan that we talked at town meeting about, there was three in last year's, and one proposed for next year's in the data that I proposed at town meeting, so we have all four as part of the grant, which, thanks to a lot of hard work between Ben and my deputy, it gets a 75% reimbursement on the...
Yes, 75%.
75% reimbursement for the three, two fiscal years, and then 30% for the last fiscal year, so it's about a half a million dollars of cost that is covered in that piece of it.
Okay, chief, hang on one second, please. Mr. Kamal, so there's a 266K increase, and there's some money elsewhere on the revenue side to offset that based on this grant?
Correct, yes.
And then there's a $42,000, sorry, go ahead on the expense side.
So, overtime is the next part of what you have in the personnel number. There's no change in the overtime budget at all, there's a slight rounding number, I've done some re-allocations with the funding for some additional training and shift coverage designed to improve the effective response, response force outcomes, all in the same number from last year. And then expenses?
Good.
Expenses, the increase to recent challenged areas in my last two fiscal budgets. Vehicle maintenance has been the biggest. Last year, I actually spent about $71,000 on something that I set aside, about $40,000 worth of vehicle maintenance, has been challenging, it's been challenging for a couple of years. And adjusting the budget to capture that, it's just not creeping back yet. I actually put in about 50, anticipating that a new ladder truck and some other equipment will give us some relief on what it costs when I do a chassis inspection, get the work done each year. So, that's why you're seeing that number. Contracted services has been increasing cost for me. New firefighters are impacting the expenses. The example would be, the equipment we get to onboard them is about $16,000 worth of equipment, and then the rotation that I do annually, I have five sets of turn-up gear, which keeps our turn-up gear compliant through a 20-year cycle. We have a number of firefighters now where we need to kick that up to six sets of gear, so we use our $3,500 bump up in that number versus having an annual capital number. RMS, we've put in some money for training and implementing the program, emergency management. We went from no budget ever in that area, but some of the equipment that we're maintaining going on, we started to invest in, and when we do some training, it helps facilitate the emergency management team that gets together each year. Sisterne maintenance, it's never been done. I manually go out, we do the best we can to patch together a system, and I've spoken to some other towns that are similar to ours, and got some numbers from them, and plan on, I asked for $5,000, that I literally go into a sisterne up on Wordy Circle that is non-operable, so I've got some estimates to start there, and each year, this year, within my budget, I went down to Washington and repaired a sisterne. This is something that's never, it's called for on the planning board, and we've never maintained it, so that's just an added item. It's, it's never been covered by anybody. And finally, an employee development program. There's a couple pieces of this. It's a promotional process I have to do every three years. In the last couple of years, what I did was, I had the promotional process, and I took the people that were successful, and I sent them for additional training to help them, so that in their career development, employee development, they're more prepared when the opportunity of a promotion comes, so it is not sitting on the shelf. The, the feedback I got on that, they don't get paid, I paid for them to travel to FDIC for instructor training, they did hands-on training with experts from across the country, and it was really uplifting to them, real positive feedback to me and the town manager on getting that program implemented. So I'd like to kind of more formalize it in the budget, and I have a once every three year piece.
So, in speaking to a couple of the firefighters that went out to Indianapolis, they came back completely rejuvenated, re-energized, enthusiastic. I thought that was worth its weight in gold, that, that program. I've been, I've been there as a, as a, not as a participant, but as a witness, I happened to be out there one year, and I caught a bunch of it, it's, it's pretty, it's a pretty cool...
It is.
Yeah.
It changes your mindset.
Yeah, it does.
And that's it, overly capital, much over the limit of capital.
All right, thanks, chief. Sealers of, sealer of weights and measures, looks like there's a zero there, so we don't really have to talk too much about that. Is someone here for them? Animal control, Mr. Proctor is not here.
The minus.
Do we have enough money there to make sure that we keep everything going the way we want it to go, based on all that we've gone through the last couple of years?
Animal control?
Yep.
I don't know, we don't have someone here to speak of it, do we?
The town manager.
Yeah, Elaine and I can speak to it if you have any questions.
Do we have enough money? The town expects the animal control department to really make sure everything's good, right? We don't want to do, I don't want to bring up topics, but we all know what to talk about. We cannot have that again, so we have to be aggressively doing our, that thing, so everyone feels good about it?
Yeah.
Okay. And we're skipping 300 and 800, we're going to 410, correct? Mr. Kamal, we're not speaking 300 and 800?
Correct.
410, engineering facilities, public works. Mr. Westling?
Ah, 410 is...
Or Mr. Daltorio?
But I'll, okay, I'll go first. Overall, the, the increase 2.3 is within the guideline from town manager, from the selectmen. There's a decrease in expenses, a minor decrease, which, it's a, personnel services is an increase. We, we had some rearranging in, in the department from, from employees, where we changed a salary, position, hourly position to salary. We have additional part-time services for when the library opens on Sundays, but overall, it's a, it's a kind of level, level service on the budget.
Mr. Kamal, wasn't there a recent announcement about some funding in that regard?
I believe you are referring to the email that was shared last night?
Yeah.
Through the chair, Dave, Brian is referring to the insurance decision regarding the floor at the center school.
One of the, one of the services facilities provides is, you know, coordinating with, with Meyer on insurance claims, as well as the, he's very helpful. Just today, the, the Meyer approved the, the claim for replacing the gym floor. So if that contractor can't start to work upon notice from a town, the, the question, I guess, so that's the...
Is that a question that we're going to ask here, or is that a question we're going to speak to at another time?
We, we can make it public, since, since also Jay's here.
Jay?
I think that's great, that we're getting that floor taken care of, because we can still use that, the kids can obviously still use that, Parks and Rec can use that. And Dave, you've been through hell and back here in the last six months, and to pull that off at the same time you did everything else with the Corridor project, you're doing a fantastic job, and I spent a lot of time with Dave Daltorio here the last few months, and really was very, very impressed with everything he's done, and so I'm glad you got that done, too. That's great. Great news.
Thank you. And overall, the, what I'm trying to do is, you know, there's the cost per square foot for custodial services, really the, the take of the buildings, has pretty much been maintained from fiscal year 16 to 20, 19, from fiscal year 19 to 20, the, the square footages of buildings that facilities maintains has doubled. It's gone from 100 to 200,000 square feet with center school included in there from last year. So we're, we're maintaining the same service in these buildings, and that kind of, you know, trying to rearrange some of the positions, and we added a second shift custodian this year, which also, it saves some money with custodial services at the DPW, but it also, we've often been finding, they provide, town employees provide better service than our custodial contracts. So, overall, it's, it's been a little bit of an increase in services, personnel services, but we're maintaining the same level of service. And we're also working with the town manager for a strategic plan for the facilities department, so the town engineer can, can get into a little more town engineer stuff, so...
And through the chair, if I may, it, it needs to be said, through the collaboration between John and Dave, the second shift custodian is also our, is also the town's recycling attendant. So it's saving two purposes.
Good job, custodians as well.
You good?
I am good.
All right. Public works, administration.
Good evening. Through the chair, I think this opportunity to discuss our highlights. What we find for the, the big changes in our operating budgets, we're looking at a $10,000 increase in our equipment supplies budget to replace a mower that's used in the parks and cemeteries. We are asking for a $10,000 increase in our hardware maintenance supplies budget to purchase a coal... to purchase a coal mining attachment for our holder tractor, which will reduce the time necessary to patch our roadway pavement and reduce our costs for man-hours and materials.
We have an increase to represent the increase in fuel costs. Our payment management program, we are asking for an increase of fifty thousand dollars. And the engineers recommend an investment in our payment management plan to maintain or improve our payment condition index, or our PCI, and to reduce our back rod. Last year, we invested one point one five million dollars in our payment management plan and the result of not approaching the engineer's recommended level is that our PCI dropped from seventy-three to seventy. We are requesting sufficient funds to invest the minimum recommendation of one point two million dollars when combined with our chapter ninety funding, but this will still result in a payment condition index decrease. It would require three hundred thousand dollars of additional funding to maintain our PCI, our payment condition index at seventy, and an additional eight hundred thousand dollars to bring our PCI back up to seventy-four. So we're looking for the minimum recommendation, but we're still going to see a minor decrease in our payment condition index. In our tree warden budget, I'm putting forward a strategic initiative, which is requesting an increase of two hundred thousand dollars, bringing the budget from fifty thousand dollars up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The FY appropriation of fifty thousand dollars is already fully expended and already seven months. And that represents the removal of about thirty trees per year. A representative survey of Hopkinton's urban forest reveals that we have approximately one thousand three hundred trees that should be removed because they are either dead or dying. At an average cost for tree removal, including prevailing wage and police details, we have a long-term obligation of over two million dollars in our urban forest. This increase represents the first of a ten-year plan to address the removal of trees, the development of a tree management plan, and the creation of a tree planting plan. The final increase that we see is contractual increases for the curbside collection of municipal solid waste and recyclables and the disposal of municipal solid waste at Wheel Obrator.
So, Mr. Kamal, on the increase on the, for the waste collection and disposal, do we have a contract with them?
Yes, we do.
And why, why are we going up?
It's pay the contract that we negotiated. You may recall, I think the last two or three years, either we have kept the costs lower or decreased them, or get a minimal, minimal increase.
To the chair, that's what I was going to say. You know, so many towns are having to give up their single, small stream recycling because the facilities just can't handle it. So I commend you for even just being able to continue getting the service.
Thank you. A number of years ago, we took out the risk, a number of years ago, when the, when the market was good for recyclables, communities were realizing revenue. But now that the market has crashed for recyclables, those communities are paying hundreds of thousands of dollars per year to dispose of the recyclables. We took that risk out, so we are market neutral when it comes to recyclables. So that's why we're only seeing contractual minimal cost per year. We also have a contract at Wheel Obrator, which goes up according to the CPI.
Mr. Chairman, this seems to be about an eight dollar a month cost per household pickup, really, really low compared to other communities. And it's, all we can figure is that because they don't have to bill everyone and do the whole administrative process, they're able to do this much, much, much cheaper. And it's, by being part of the tax base, it's a tax deductible expense to our residents. And if we're billed separately, it would not be tax deductible.
John, on personal services for Public Works Administration, increase of twenty-one thousand dollars, what is that for?
That's essentially merit increases and longevity payments.
Merit, yeah, longevity stuff, okay. Your forty-nine thousand is covered. Is Mr. Regan aware of this two hundred thousand dollar increase in expenses for the tree warden department? And is he approved of this?
He'll get me on Sunday.
Have we talked to Mr. Regan about this? He's been very adamant as a resident and advocated for some type of apartment to be started and a true management plan to be put in place, which just looks like this is going in that direction. But I just want to make sure he's included in this discussion. We haven't finalized anything yet. And, you know, he's spent two or three of his nights with us here in the last year advocating for what I think you're proposing with this two hundred K.
Informally, yes, John, he has had on and off conversations with Mr. Regan. However, in terms of the process, you'll recall, you have requested the town manager working with DPW to formulate a plan.
Right.
Part of that process will involve extended discussions with Mr. Regan.
Yeah, he's a professional in the business and he's been very kind to help us out.
For me, to the chair, to piggyback on that, how are we doing with getting the truck that we approved last year? That's been a year now.
So Mr. Regan has been very closely working with Ben and myself. We are challenged at finding a used vehicle that will both meet our needs, has the extended reach that we need, and also is going to be a safe vehicle for us. So he's been working very closely with Ben and I to put together what we're looking for and helping us to determine which vehicles are available. He even brought in an industry book to help us with dealers that deal in those used vehicles. So we're working very closely with, with Mr. Regan and trying to, trying to bring that home for us. We, we have a dedicated staff at the DPW, as you know, and we have a lot of people there that are eager for this new vehicle to come in and receive the training so that they can help out with the urban forest that we have and the needs and the trees.
If I may, I believe Mr. Westling is very modest. He also has attended many training sessions to make sure that we fulfill the goal that was set by the select board for the town manager.
So in years past, Mr. Westling and I have had some pretty healthy discussions at this evening's forum at, or whatever, and outside the room. But this is clearly a line, a busy with a lot of line items, all that falls under your purview. And there's a lot of increases, but this is also a department that really feels the growth of Hopkinton and has a lot more work because of the growth of Hopkinton, like everybody else for that matter in the room. We're all feeling that, and that's why there's not a huge pushback on some of these things, because we get it. Or at least I get it, and I think my colleagues do, too. So no fights tonight, Josh, it's kind of boring.
We haven't decapitalized it yet.
Well, yeah, that's what I was thinking about. John, did you touch on the cemetery commission? No, there's no changes on that.
It did not.
All right, so you're good?
Yes, thank you.
All right. John?
Thank you. We're allowed us to control our budget. We have a one point six percent on the merit increases. And then we've worked with the existing budgets to find savings. We're looking at, we've digitized some of our submittals and we've gone to a digital inspection software process, which is saving us money on supplies, it's more time practice. So we're continuing to work on finding those savings and then putting an extra service to bring the residents with the existing budget we have.
Thank you. Amy?
Hi.
How are you?
Just fine, thanks. How are you guys? So our biggest change this year is in personal services. It's a staffing request that we've made that brings the senior center assistant with the town in its support of staff salaries. We have four salaries or four part-time individuals who've been paid through, that's supported by our friends group. And we're asking that the town assume the full responsibility for the staffing of the senior center. So that is our biggest increase as far as our expenses. They've stayed pretty much the same. The biggest difference in when you see the negative is that that was our security camera was the cost that was done for this year. So that won't be an ongoing cost.
If I may?
Yeah?
Through the chair, I want to take this opportunity, in fact, to celebrate the wonderful, efficient, and forward-looking partnership between the town and the friends of the seniors. What needs to be said is, as part of transitioning the responsibility for paying the, for the four part-time staff persons, you know what the friends are doing? They are assuming responsibility, financial responsibility for funding programming, which I think is a brilliant idea. The town invests, I think, overall, less than twenty-five thousand dollars towards programming. And the, and the friends of the seniors have identified this as a key need and have agreed that they would put their resources towards programming.
Awesome. Is that why the expenses is down, that twenty-one grand, is that part of it?
No, that's the security cameras that were put in last year's that are being installed this year. So that was a one-time cost.
So, Mr. Kamal, on this transfer of responsibility from the friends to the town for staffing for the senior center, it sounds like you and Amy have obviously talked about this and worked through this, and everybody's, everyone's in agreement on this? You're in agreement on this?
Yes.
Elaine, you're in agreement on this? See, I'm trying to start a fight here, folks, and no one's fighting. So we're good on that?
Yes, we're good. The council on aging is great with this, and so is the, so are the friends of the senior center.
Okay, thank you. Youth and fam, excuse me, Youth and Family Services.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Youth and Family Services offers free and confidential support for the community, including information and referral to a host of mental health issues, counseling, case management, crisis intervention and prevention services. For many families, these services fill a critical need in times of crisis and have become a safety net to many. The proposed increases are driven by the increase in requests for services and can be primarily attributed to two requests. In personnel services, eighty percent of the personnel services increase is an increase in hours for the youth services counselor from twenty hours to thirty per week. And the remainder of that is just the personnel of being down a director and then hiring a director and those, those expenses going up and down accordingly. School referrals for children in need of mental health services have been increasing as the school population increases and more people have learned about the service that my predecessor did a lot to set up and make a community fixture. And as more word of mouth grows, the increase in hours for the youth services counselor will allow for the increased programming and events, as well as offering more clinical hours to the community. And so that, that explains the personal costs. The expenses, one hundred percent of the proposed expense increase, thirteen thousand in expenses, is to fund the contract with interface referral services. We started that program back in September. Within three months' time, there were thirty-nine referrals made for outpatient mental health services for residents in need. Nineteen of those were ages six to twelve. The remainder of those, minus five adults, were teens and young adults. So really, it's, it's the community's children that are being referred to mental health service with the leading issues of anxiety and depression. And two of those callers expressed suicidal ideation at the time of their contact. So it's a life-saving service, or has the potential to be. And right now, it's funded through an earmark, and frankly, that gives me palpitations because, because when I think of earmarks being somewhat fickle, they could go away. And, and I would, I would hate to see the service go away where it's become such a vital one so quickly. So in three months' time, thirty-nine referrals, and you might ask, well, what's the typical? The typical is fifty per community of this size. And so we've already utilized almost the full thirteen thousand. I think it's eight thousand five hundred in three months' time of the cost of that thirteen thousand. The contract is thirteen thousand per year, no matter how many referrals we have, but cost ratio, it's eight thousand five already that they've spent in providing services to the community. And so the, the value of it is very high as well, not to mention the value of human lives, but if we're talking dollars, that's what it looks like. And, and so that's our request for this fiscal year.
You know, this is, this isn't me or Mr. Hurd talking right now normally, but, you know, is the increase to thirty hours enough? Should we be more progressive and put, make this a full-time position so we're not worried about this?
That's what I was going to bring up. We've had this same discussion.
Right. So why don't we just go ahead, you know, this is one of those years that if, you know, again, we were talking about the growing community. And, and, you know, and, and this, you know, the youth services counselor, it's huge. You know, and, and mental health intervention, it's, it's, it's so needed. You know, should we really look at it, you know, at, at this point and think about a full-time position?
That's it. So maybe we should, but we're not. I mean, we're, we're watching our nickels and dimes, and these are, these are professionals, and these are the budget they're putting forth. Far be it from us to tell them they should add more, maybe.
Well, conversely, we could tell them to take some out.
We could, we could suggest, yep. But.
But my point on all this is, when we had this discussion three or four years ago, I'm not sure, you may have just missed it by a year. At that time, there was a lot of discussion about, well, is our youth and family services going to become a, a private practice, if you will? And are the taxpayers going to be funding that? I advocated that we should, but some of us at the time didn't want to, and that's why it was a twenty-hour position. I'm pretty sure that's how we kind of settled on a twenty-hour, part-time position, because we were concerned about the liability of the community, et cetera. But some of us were concerned, I think, at the time, so.
And there's a big difference between private practice counseling and the services that the youth services counselor primarily provides. She's, she's doing a lot of the safety net stuff for families that are experiencing crisis. And so whether it's financial need, whether it's a connection to a utility, food resources, you know, and with our food stamps program shrinking and families getting far less, and so, you know, you're thinking a family of five living off of like three hundred dollars in food stamps a month. I don't know how you feed teenagers with that. You know, scrambling for food resources and getting people connected to those resources, it takes a lot of time and effort. And that's where I think, you know, the majority of, of that position's time goes, is chasing down these resources. And let me tell you, Colleen Souza does a fabulous and amazing job. She goes above and beyond the call of duty, finding furniture and, you know, all kinds of things for families to keep them afloat and, and to, you know, preserve their dignity and their value and their self-worth during really difficult times. So, you know, I'm just, I'm blown away, so.
To Mr. Ted Stone's point, so this budget that you're requesting and these numbers, this, you feel is satisfactory for where we are as a community and the needs that the community has?
We're engaging in a strategic planning process, so I fully believe, you know, that will, that will flesh all that out. And so I can't promise you I will be back at some point. But as of right now, I think this, this will get us through this year. And I didn't want to be greedy. I know there's a lot of other departments that, that are up against it, too. And so, but this, what I felt was the most responsible choice, that I could come forward, especially, you know, given the increase in need and the utilization of that interface service, that is just, it's blown my mind that thirty-nine in three months' time, where other communities are seeing like fifty in a year, so. And, and part of that is, is the promotion, but we haven't even done the full-scale promotion yet. That's coming, so.
So I'm appreciative of your conservative approach, but please, if something happens off-cycle and you need to come see us between now and the next, next year, don't hesitate, because we really cannot put a price on, on our, our youth lives or, or anyone's lives.
I thank you for that support.
So you have our support.
Wonderful. I mean, it feels amazing to, to know that we serve with that.
It's nice to see that you come up and start low and titrate, you know, we'll titrate, titrate up as we need, but, you know, you're doing a great job and you're doing a great service, so.
Thank you very much.
To the chair?
Yes, sir. Forgot you were down there.
Do you, do you foresee the, with the increased need, that, do you see this being enough? I mean, do you see the, the increase keep on going higher?
I think to look for other revenue sources is important. And so without, you know, going into huge detail, here we are looking for other ways to, to fund other elements of the department, particularly prevention services. And so we're building the coalition and, so that it can become more sustainable and perhaps apply for other funds and federal funds in the future, so that our time as clinicians can be devoted back into the. can be devoted back into the clinical work and the needs-based assistance work and the prevention work that can be larger than life in itself. We want to prevent kids from coming to us because they're healthy and well. That might take a chunk off. So I think it'll be difficult to know before the strategic plan, especially with my being so new to the community, where it all rests, but...
I mean, I think what you've heard from a lot of us is that we just don't want, due to lack of funding, a person in need to not get those services.
And I think that the two employees you have in that department, we wouldn't let somebody not be served. I think, you know, we're working pretty hard. I don't think we'd sleep at night if we knew there was somebody out there, and we wouldn't turn a blind eye to them. So we find a way to connect them with something and, you know, I'll be back on Tuesday night to share more with you about Interface and more about what the department's been doing lately.
And we have a procurement and grants group over here that might be able to help out.
I've been, I've been very close to that.
Great, thank you, thanks, really. It's a tough job.
Thank you.
Veteran Services.
The assessment by the district is going up by $2,000, and the Chapter 115 benefits are going up by 5%. Our caseload is going up, which is what we expected, and we have charged the Veterans' District Office to do more public education, especially with regards to the veterans coming from the Iraq War.
Yes. I think that that's money well spent. Library.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
We have a 2.3% increase, which is within budget targets. It is approximately $13,000. The majority of that, about two-thirds, is in the staffing line that is raises, and it's also some adjustments to estimates that were made for new positions. There were some new positions in the FY '20 budget. I estimated what we would be paying them as we have gone through the hiring process. I have adjusted that upward, and that makes that difference. The rest of the increase is about a $4,000 increase in our line for collections purchases. About half of that is, in a sense, offset because we are now bringing in about $2,000 of revenue to the town annually, which we were not before.
Collections.
In printing, photocopying and faxing fees. Our lost items fines and replacement fines go into a revolving fund that we spend right back on materials. It's actually not reflected in these numbers, it's a separate thing. But our printing, photocopying, faxing used to be collected by the Friends because they paid for the photocopier lease. Now, the town covers all of those expenses, and so the money we collect goes to the general fund. So that's a new revenue stream. So that $4,000 is basically, we're required to spend a certain amount on materials every year by the state. It goes up as our appropriation from the town goes up. The town funds less than half of what we actually are required to spend. So I, you know, throw a little in there. I like to try and keep the town's contribution about keeping pace. We're spending about $50,000 annually from other sources on materials to meet that spending requirement. So we're asking for about $41,000 total this year towards that from the town side.
Thanks, Heather. So, Mr. Camalo, historic commission celebrations, townwide celebration for Hopkinon Day, historic district commission, those are all zeros, so we're good there, right?
We're good, and I'm sure there will be a question as to whether this means that we will not have Hopkinon Day celebrations.
Well, it's already paid for. All right. We're not doing anything on debt service tonight, right?
I can give you a little on debt service.
30,000 feet.
Yes, sir. So there's a big increase in debt service because it includes several things that are not in there now. The first thing is the nine and a half million that is going to the ballot on Tuesday, so that assumes that's gonna happen Monday. Sorry, I'll be there Monday, I won't be there Tuesday. So that assumes that that's gonna happen. That starts out at about $740,000 in '21 and tapers off to $140,000 by the time it's paid off in 2050. That also includes money for the $15 million that's in this budget for center school and the $4 million that's in there for school rooms. So this is the number we'll have if everything on the capital page gets approved. If some things on the capital page do not get approved, this number will go down. It won't help our situation in the budget for the schools much because 19 of the 20 million is excluded from the levy in the center school and the school rooms.
I can almost guarantee you that that number's gonna go down on the capitals.
And that's why I wanted to tell you that this is a variable number. So it won't affect our ability to fund the schools, but it'll affect tax impact if it goes down.
Mr. Tedstone, so I'm having a really hard time, and I know we're not gonna get into capital articles tonight because we don't have time to do that tonight. I don't think we have socialized this $15 million for the center school project at all. I just think that that number just came from somewhere. I know nothing about that $15 million, full disclosure. I don't think my colleagues know anything about this $15 million. But all of a sudden, we're all talking about this $15 million we're gonna work on, spend on the center school. I just, I think we're just way ahead of ourselves in this one, and I don't know why we're doing that. I don't want to debate it tonight, but I'm just telling you, if I don't know anything about it and my colleagues don't know anything about it, I don't think the town knows anything about it either.
Through the chair, we agree with you, Mr. Hare.
Then why is it in here?
That's the reason. It is in here because we have a calendar for our budget and for our town meeting articles. That's why it's in here. However, we do agree.
I think it's in here a year or two from now when we fully socialize what we're gonna do with the building.
We agree with you. However...
But why is it in here?
Because we have to comply with the town meeting as well as budget calendars.
So we're holding a place for town meeting?
I don't...
I forget that. I just go, is it in now or it's next year?
Exactly.
Exactly, exactly. So for us to make the decision that it was gonna miss a year, when the Public Building Committee took a position, we thought we had to include it, and we're telling you, it's in this number, and it's variable, depending on what you decide.
But what we decided as the select board was that the permanent building committee was gonna go out and do their thing and study at center school, and they did that, and they had the other committee, and they came back, and they were gonna come back with some recommendations. And someday, somebody was gonna come back to this board and make a recommendation, this is what we think we need to do, and it's the money we think we need to bring a town meeting. That has not happened yet.
We have agreed, yes, that has not happened.
Then why are we talking about $15 million?
It's easier to take it out than to put it back in. If you decide you want to do it in April, we won't be able to do it for you. But if you decide not to do it in April, we can take it out. We can take it out in a moment, but after the third, we can't put it back in.
So for those of us that go to dinner in town and go to get a drink in town and go to church in town and go to soccer fields in town and have people chewing on our ears about $15 million for center school that we haven't even talked about yet, it's not that easy, okay? So I hear your point, but it's not easy for those of us that have to listen to it. And with all due respect to everybody in the room and everyone in the community, there's a legit concern, people have about $15 million for the center school, especially since we didn't even know what we're gonna do with it yet. We're just talking about $15 million bucks. Is it $15 million to turn it into a garden?
That was the top estimate. And in conservatism, we put the top estimate in there, and we highlighted it here, so you would see the most shocking number you could see to sensitize you to what the range of possible outcomes are. It's between 0 and 15 million.
Yeah.
And it's, if we had more information or if we could do this a week before town meeting, we would have done this differently.
I can think of right now, 250 people that would spend $15 million on that building as a town. 250 people tops, okay? And I've been getting into prediction of how people voted certain things over my 12 years here, I barely missed. The other 17,750 are gonna look at that building and say, it's $215 million, for what? Even if we got some great plans, they're gonna say, for what? We gotta do a lot better job socializing whatever it is we're gonna do.
Mr. Hare... We're not gonna fight tonight.
Through the chair, Mr. Hare, I think your point is very well taken. Here's the good thing, respectfully, can you just be a little bit patient?
No.
The Permanent Building Committee, the Permanent Building Committee met two weeks ago. They have identified a company that will help us in moving this discussion forward. To help you along, is it likely that this $15 million is gonna be moving forward at this annual town meeting? Highly unlikely.
But if that debt service number is in this number right here, and it's in the net tax impact number, that we have to go out, justify to the residents of Hopkinon, and we have to talk about that dreaded word, the override, as we build up to May, and it's built on a premise of $15 million, we're actually not planning on spending or appropriating?
It took us almost two years to vet out getting a school that we absolutely, the replacement school for that. And now, we're trying to think that we're gonna spend $15 million or maybe a little less in two months? This will not fly. If I may, if I may, let's go back to the beginning of this discussion. We are early in the process. No decisions, final decisions have been made. Let's be consistent with that message. We're early in the process, Mr. Hare. No decision has been made regarding the $15 million. Thankfully, the Permanent Building Committee has started a process that will help us along. Again, highly unlikely that this is moving forward.
I'll tell you what is moving forward, our agenda.
Yes.
What do we have left, Jay?
Yeah, I'm out.
Sorry, Jay.
Hello. I'm out. I thought there was water and salt.
Employee benefits and insurance, through the chair, we've discussed these issues as part of the budget discussions over the last three months, please keep on...
Yeah.
Also, if you look, you'll see some numbers that look a little odd. One of the challenges we faced this year is that our summer sports, the seasonal, in the past, we probably have between 15 and 75 people who we take on as coaches, instructors, administrators. In the past, we paid them basically through the accounts payable in the Department as contract people. We call them, they give us a tax ID number, we set them up as a vendor, we pay them. They pointed out to us by actually the School Human Resources Department that that is actually not even part of the economy. So going forward now, we have to hire all these folks as seasonal employees. So that's why you see that enormous increase in personal services, and you see it offset in expenses because we're taking, basically, we're just switching it from expense to personal service. So that makes up about probably close to $70,000 with that $84,000 dollar increase. The other increases are an increase in minimum wage this year. We also had a market adjustment for both the staff members in the department, so their hourly rates went up from about 29 to 25, which is pretty significant, quite a budget for that. And also, our other staffer in the office, the fact that we're gonna be hiring these people and going through this hiring process of really a lot of people, it's gonna require a little more time. So we're hoping our first 20 hours will be converted in anticipation of some increased time and effort that has to be put into this. On the expense side, as I said, probably about $70,000 going from expense to personal services. The other thing we're trying to do this year, coming to John's point, is if you bet at the time this summer, you may or may not notice that a lot of the trees are dying, specifically the sugar maple trees, which are literally deteriorating. We've had a lot of good tree residents protest on that. We met last summer with Mesut and the rep from Bartlett Trees, they put together an estimate for us, and I think we would like to start the process of a real sort of tree manager process down in Combe. If you want to get ahead of this before it starts to really look bad, and that's probably the biggest increase in our expense line issue.
So I don't understand why tree management falls on your budget, not your budget.
Parks and Recreation has possibly come.
Parks and Rec doesn't mow it.
No, we pay John to mow. So we do an intercompany, basically, a miles transport, a year, a couple of talks for other works. Grass, also seen on English, that's the way I pronounce it.
Another reason to develop a...
Yeah, no, I have a few questions. A number of years ago, when I was on one of the other boards, we appropriated money and we put 24 trees on the common. Between old dying trees and then there's new trees. And the old ones were supposed to have been taken out from time to time, and I don't think that that happened all that often. Is that why new trees are becoming diseased because of the diseased old trees that were there or, I mean...
No, it's a good point. Since I've been in the position, I think we've removed two trees that were dead or dying that I can think of. But honestly, what we've been told by both Pete Mesut and by Bartlett Trees is that this is actually a climate change issue and that certain species of trees in the last 15 to 20 years are now actually deteriorating due to climate changes, is what the experts are saying. So I can't comment on any sort of tree plant, how I'm acquired, and I'm being here. If we're happy to involve any and all town groups in this process...
Yeah, this was one of the trust funds, and it was specifically for trees on Main Street and the Common, and they did buy 24 trees. And one was a tulip tree to match one that's over in the cemetery.
The tulip trees are actually very healthy and doing well.
Huh?
The tulip trees are actually very healthy and doing well.
They're doing well, yeah. And then there were others, and you can see them, I mean, they're much smaller than the big old ones that were seized.
We're concerned, I'm concerned personally about enormous tree limbs falling off and damaging the fountain, or damaging a person. And like I said, there are a lot, actually, a lot of concerned residents who spend a lot of time out there who have approached us on this, and turns out they're right. So we'd like to get in front of that, and we'd like to start this year.
I have a question for, I wonder, for Tim and Mr. Camalo. Is that the most efficient way, is that they own the common, but we're paying them and money has to be transferred, so instead of having a more straightforward budget that John takes care of all the trees and all the grass and everything else, and we just figure that into the thing so we don't have to have Parks and Rec going to Bartlett instead of having our own tree people looking at stuff? I, you know, I just wondered for efficiency's sake.
Through the chair, the Park and Rec Commission is independently elected. We will have to negotiate that. We did that with the mowing of the common.
Oh, okay. We're open to all ideas.
In some other towns, public work supports all the fields as well as the common space. All right. So just a quick thought. The trees on the common have been a topic of discussion many times over the years. There are a lot of people very passionate, wanna play with the kids at the common. There are a lot of people in the area that just love the mature trees of the common and the canopy that exists today. It will be a very passionate discussion when we get to it. So we can't, and I know you and your colleagues on the board wouldn't just go out and start, yeah, you know, knock down trees because there'll be people chained to those trees.
No, no, we would never. We actually, we've discussed that, and that's, we're not gonna just, you know, allow or decide, hey, these ones gotta go.
Yeah, we've got a public hearing, we walk through and all...
And we receive calls all the time from people who think we should have twice as many trees and other from people who think we should have half as many.
Right.
Depending on the demographic you're presenting, there's a lot of opinions barrier on trees.
Trees, trails and trash. Mr. Camalo, are we good?
We're good. Just one more, Department of Water and Sewer Enterprise, important that John updates the board on the budget for this.
Thank you. Through the chair, the Sewer Enterprise Fund, we have a modest increase for personal services to reflect contractual obligations, and we have a reduction in the expenses. We believe we can realize some savings because we're not sending sewerage to Milford on a regular basis. a regular basis because of the vacant properties on South Street. On the Water Enterprise side, again, we have a modest increase in personal services for contractual obligations. And then on the expenses side, there is a modest increase to reflect increases in our supplies.
Mr. Camalo, on that end with the Water and Sewer, this year when we have our audit, are we going to have a different audit company so that that's actually going to explain it to us a little bit better this time? Because the last few years, we get a number, we get a number, and then we're shocked and have to raise rates. I'm just throwing that out there, please, just keep it in mind when we, when we start to do that again.
Yeah, I think as we've been saying, the town is in a great position. We have a very strong finance team. They are taking the lead role. However, if we do need additional support from the consultant, we will ask for that help. However, the driver right now will be the financial team.
I haven't been pleased with that. In six years being on the board, the consultant doesn't seem to hit those numbers very well each year. There always seems to be a shock value when they come through, you know, like that. Thank you. Sorry.
Good?
Good. Thank you.
Good. Mr. Camalo, do you want to give us a 30,000-foot overview of these capital items? It's got to be quick, though. I'm going home. I've been here since 4:30 today. I'm going home.
No, I think what we'll do is we will come back next Tuesday.
Perfect.
For the capital items.
So noted.
So, yeah, there's a lot of capital articles, and a lot of them are going to have to be put out. The way...
I don't have any.
...not go, these pieces we're going with, and we go out and buy all the surrounding stuff, it's not going to work.
So are we all set?
I think we're all set.
I would love to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. I oppose the carries. Thank you. Good night.